Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Dawson County Commissioner's Work Session Agenda. Today is Thursday, May 21st, 2020. We'll get right into unfinished business. First up, we have a presentation of special event business license application, Mountain Madness for Fossett Farms, Planning and Development Director Jameson Kendall. This was originally appeared on the March 19th, 2020 work session agenda. The proposed for April 2020 event was postponed due to COVID-19. Jameson.
Hey Chairman. Fossett Farms is hosting the hoster event called Mountain Madness. It is a 15K trail run through their existing horse trails. The site already has a special event permit for the sunflowers. If approved, this event will be rescheduled for June 20th from the original March 21st. It still has the same approvals from the Marshals Planning Chair, Fire Name Us, and our county managers. Do you have any questions?
Do we need to move back to the night for so they can advertise everything?
No, it's 20th, we got them.
We got them.
And that'll let me come from the chamber. I think they've already...
Well, they'll have to market for it.
Yeah, they put it out. Everybody thought it was going to be in March.
I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, we can. That's what y'all want to do.
It might help them. Please know, we just furnished the place. This is a chamber event. This is not a Fossett Farms event. Zip, not a nothing is what we get out of it. Okay. We'll make that later.
Other questions for Jameson. Thank you, sir. Next up, we have a presentation of the 2020/21 Dawson County Proposed Healthcare Package, Human Resources Director Brad Goode, and NFP Senior Vice President Tammy Stark.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Chairman, Commissioners. It's that time of year for us to look at our enrollment for the health benefits for the employees of Dawson County. To apologize for the lateness of it, as we all know, a lot's been going on. We are, however, about a week and a half ahead of last year. We've presented some information ahead of time. And I've got Tammy Stark here tonight to present the plan and run down through the costs and some other things that we've got outlined for you.
Good afternoon. Again, my name is Tammy Starky. I am Vice President with NFP. This afternoon, I wanted to go through first the health plan overview so that you all have an understanding of what is driving the increase renewal from Anthem Blue Cross Shield and also the results of the marketing. So, in the presentation, on Slide 2, you'll see an overview of the last five years of our medical prescription drug claims. We knew that's what drives the cost of our health plan. The administrative cost is a very small portion. Our claims are what drive the overall premiums, cost to the county, and the cost to employees. So, we did see for plan year 2018 that would have started July 1st, 2018, we saw an increase in our claims expense of 28%. We went from 2.5 million, and that had been our average for the years prior, 2.2, 2.5 million, to 3.2 million last year. So far this year, the experience that's being used in your renewal evaluation, the underwriting of the renewal for the medical plan is through January. So, that's seven months of the plan year, and we're already at 2.1 million. So, if we annualize that and say claims continue to run that way, and so far we have data through March indicates we are trending in the same manner, we would end the plan year at 3.6 million. So, another 12% up from where we ended last plan year. So, we are seeing an increased trend in the overall cost of the health plan. On Slide 3, you'll see that exhibit where you see that orange line is plan year 2018, how we ended that year, and how we're tracking so far for 2019. Page 4 shows you just the medical claims. This does not include the prescription drug claims. So, we see that overall trend line for the last 36 months of how our medical claims costs are tracking. And then we compare that to Slide 5 with the prescription drug claims. So, you see very flat on prescription drugs, but what's driving it for us are our medical claims. And really, what that is, is our large cost medical claims. It's not overall utilization on the plan. It's our most expensive utilizers. So, Slide 6, you'll see that exhibit where we're looking at any one member with claims over 25,000 is categorized as a large claim. And so, you see that comparison here where that lighter blue is total claims for the year, and that brighter blue is going to be your large claims. So, anything, any member over 25,000. And we were averaging around 45 to 50% of our claims were large claims in the prior plan years. But last plan year, they were 60% of our claims. And this plan year so far, they're 59% of our claims. And when you look at our increase, we saw last year how those claims went up, that 25%, $700,000, basically all of that increase, was the increase we saw in large claims. By going from 1.2 million to 1.9 million dollars in large claims, that's what drove the increase. So, for this plan year, we have 22 people that fall into this over $25,000 category. So, that's 4% of the overall membership, driving 59% of the claims on the plan. That is outside of the norms of what you would see. We typically see these large claims more around that 30 to 40% mark. So, being in the 55, 60% range is high. We do have three claims that are over $100,000 that drive a big portion of that. As we look at the type of claims that we have, many of these can be driven back to lifestyle-related behaviors. So, we see a lot of our large claims on our plan are from things like musculoskeletal issues, from type 2 diabetes, and these things that we can call back to lifestyle behaviors. And so, this, on page 7, is an exhibit from Anthem where they look at over the last 12 months, what types of lifestyle behaviors are driving expenses on the plan. And so, you'll see they're showing here lifestyle behaviors of overweight or obesity, lack of physical activity, poor nutrition, tobacco use, even stress and anxiety, and assigning a direct associated expense based off of the type of claims you have on your plan, and an indirect expense. We'll see indirect often will be tied back to things like overweight and obesity may also be indirectly impacting anxiety and depression. So, those can be tied more in an indirect manner. So, there's a lot of opportunity here to impact these types of claims. Not all of them are catastrophic claims where we could, would not have been avoidable. There's a lot of opportunity where we can help improve the health of the population and therefore avoid some of these high-cost claims, improving our population's overall life, but improving the cost of our healthcare. And so, to do that, you really need to look at a comprehensive wellness program. And with that, when I talk about comprehensive wellness program, I mean a structured program that we would have a vendor come in, complete annual health assessment. So, they're going to do a biometric screening, do height, weight, blood profile, blood pressure. They're going to do a health survey where members are going to answer questions about their habits of diet, exercise, stress. And then from that, all participants would have a 30-minute coaching session to review their results. So, what do my numbers mean? Where do I need to be? And how do I get there? Then from there, with those results, the county looks at aggregate data, so overall population, and there's risk stratification. How many do we have in these high-risk populations? And normally, I've got multiple risk factors. And so, with that, the high-risk population would participate in coaching, where the coaches come on-site, where they can do a telethon for video accessible, and they're going to look at what specific goals that patient needs to meet and wants to meet, and how can they get there, put a realistic plan in place. And to do that, we've got to have participation in this program. We know that when we do a voluntary program, or maybe we give you a gift card, that's when you've got the healthy, really wanting to prove how healthy they are. You don't have the participants that are avoiding that bad information about what their health might be, and they just don't want to know. And so, we really need to get at least 90% of our population, and we're looking at employees and spouses, because spouses drive a lot of those high-cost claims. Get them into that program, and to do that, we've got to have an impactful financial incentive. And so, we work with a lot of city and county governments on this type of program. And where we see it most successful is when we tie that participation incentive to their payroll deductions, meaning that if you don't participate in this program, then you pay more for your health insurance. And participation is simply do that health assessment, that biometric screening, and then coaching if you're high-risk. And those coaches, again, do come on-site, or they'll be available through virtual engagement, and they work around the employee schedule. We work with vendors that are very familiar with how the county employee schedules operate, and so they're going to be able to adhere to that. So, we have presented a proposal for a comprehensive wellness program for vendors to come in and do all of these things. For the counties, a little over $46,000, again, for the employees and the spouses on the plan. And we were able to get a $20,000 wellness fund from Anthem with this new plan year. And so, you can use that wellness fund to fund this program or to supplement other programs that you have, or a little bit of both.
I guess a question. Any other counties or cities make this mandatory?
You can't make it mandatory because of ACA regulations. So, you can't say you aren't on our health plan unless you participate. But we can make it pretty impactful through their paychecks that they do participate. And so, what we're looking at is probably a $50 differential. If you participate, then you don't pay it. If you don't participate, you pay $50 more for your health insurance.
What other kind of incentives, or you say, if counties have a health program like this?
Yeah, so the most common and the most successful is through their payroll deductions, because when you impact their paycheck, that's when people sit up and pay attention. We do have some that'll do differentials, and they're deductible on the health plan, but not everyone is going to meet that deductible. So, it doesn't, it's not as impactful to everyone if they know, hey, I'm just going to go to the doctor a couple of times a year. I'm not going to meet that deductible I don't plan to. That doesn't always hit the mark. And then we have some that'll do just kind of a cash incentive, but again, not everybody's fully motivated by that, and it is taxable.
And meeting hours, if I'm correct, it was only like 2% of our people leave the pocket, right?
Yeah, yeah, so we're very low. And your out-of-pockets are very low for where the market is for other city and county governments, what other benchmarks are. So, I think most are around 2%. You guys, when I looked at the data after our call the other day, was more like 5% just because they're so low. But that's out of, I think we have 458 members on the plan. So, it's a very low number that hit that.
So, we're really, we're dealing with two separate issues. And one is our renewal that's in front of us, and number two is how do we change the trajectory of our claims activity? And we're obviously seeing another trend. Implementing something like this is a substantial cost and investment. However, the idea and the theory behind it is we curb those activities or lack of activities in order to get, I wouldn't necessarily say lower costs, because we don't see insurance going down anytime soon, especially health insurance, but at least slow the pain that's coming with future renewals that we see. Kristin here on staff has been doing a wellness check, I think. And we have two ways you can look at it from my perspective. Is you can have the carrot that benefits you if you come to do the task, or you have the pain, not be the bad word, but you have a negative approach to it. I hate to use the negative approach, but in the same sense, the only way this thing works is to get participation levels up. I mean, if we had, Kristin, you might be able to answer. We have, what, 130 people participate in the wellness program we're kind of doing in-house? Is that about right?
Yes, we usually have about one-third of our participants.
Okay. So, a third, and we're giving them a benefit of some sort, $25 gift cards or like that?
Well, we do gift cards, though we do have an incentive prize each year.
So, there's an incentive, so...
The only catch with the wellness fair versus a program such as this is we're only able to offer the wellness fair one day.
Right.
And that limits a lot of the shift workers from being able to come and participate.
Okay.
So, that also drives that number.
A, what we're already doing is great. I don't want to diminish that, but it is probably moving the needle somewhat, but not at the level we need to do that. So, we've got to hit that, I think you said, 90% participation level. So, that's big. So, for $46,000, 30-minute coaching sessions, some health surveys, really, I mean, $46,000, what, I mean, that's, calculate that, that's 127 dollars an individual. Is this, it's not a one-time hit on 30-minute coaching section? You need to do this, this, there's constant follow-up and encouragement, or?
So, it's the biometric screening. So, they're going to do the blood draw for all participants on the plan. So, that's one portion of the cost. It's normally, you know, $60, $75 when you're going in your physician for that type of lab screening. And then everyone gets that 30-minute coaching. But the high-risk participants get follow-up coaching three times during the year. So, they're getting four sections in total during the year. And so, we are right now accounting for projecting 50% of the population being high-risk. And that's not far off from where we see most county governments year one in a program. And I would not be surprised if we've got people that need immediate attention from that biometric screening.
So, you're seeing interaction at least for 50% of our population, four to five times annually?
Right.
In order to curb those behaviors? So, the, you guys secured $20,000 wellness fund from Anthem effective 7/1/2020. So, if we elect to move forward with this, then we can take that $20,000 credit. So, essentially, it takes it from 46 down to 40, I mean, 26?
Yeah, you can apply all of that to the program.
Okay.
One thing to keep in mind with that, given that $20,000 is, we talked about the financial incentive on the premium. You may want to reserve some of that money for some of the other programs. Kristi uses, we get $10,000 now from that. And Kristi uses part of that for her health and wellness fairs, and part of that also is for some of the incentives that she has given out for the pain, her gain of pain, which she has around the holidays.
So, we're already getting this $20,000, no real payment?
We started bidding $10,000.
We're hitting $10,000. So, is this one on the same, or is there two separate?
Ex.
This will be, instead of $10,000, we get $20,000.
Yeah, yeah, additional $10,000.
Right, it's an increase. So, there are certain things that we have to use it for, that Anthem offerizes us, or will approve us to use it for. One of those things we could use it for is for this program. I would just caution that we would want a portion of that money for some of the other programs and for some other incentives as well, i.e. the gain of no pain program.
Where are the overlaps in what we're currently doing with this program? Is there duplications of what Kristi's already done with something that's more substantial like this?
There would be. When we do, she can speak better than I can, but she can correct me if I'm wrong. But the biometric, we do that. In the past, we found a few of our employees that have had significant medical issues and have gone to the doctor and started working on those. So, when Tammy talks about the visits that they'll have, the 30-minute visit, and then the ongoing visits, we also have to remember that we hope those employees are going to the doctor in between as well. And that's what we've seen, that's what we've seen in the past, that some of the employees have been high-risk, whether it be diabetes or heart condition, and it's alerted them to go. So, there may be some other things that are overlapping.
Am I correct in thinking last year we canceled the health fair or that holiday session because we didn't have enough people sign up?
No, no, we had to reschedule the one that was scheduled for January, but we just hosted it in October instead.
Okay.
So, we would get the, maybe not $20,000, but $10,000 regardless if we went with this? Or what if we decided to go with another option that does essentially the same thing? Do we get the 20, or?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
That's going to be part of that health plan renewal. The wellness program she's presenting will be from a third-party vendor that they use.
Excuse me, Krista. How many vendors are out there that does this? Where else do you have stores?
There are several vendors, and we have a wellness consultant on our team that is dedicated to evaluating those vendors. The one we're proposing here has the most experience working with city and county governments, so we think that it's a good fit for your employee populations.
So, they didn't know what the prize round was? One there for 20, and one there for 100, or?
Yeah, and they're normally on the lower end. And this was, we looked at several programs within their options, and this was, you know, kind of our starter plan of where we think the county should start out at.
Wouldn't we be better off with this comprehensive plan that she's proposing than with what we're already doing if this comprehensive plan totally encapsulates what we're doing anyway? And this is going to affect 90%. We're now looking at 33%. And we have the ability with that for the coaching that we're not obviously doing after we do what we do. And if we're going to have 50% of our population that's going to be high-risk and need continuous coaching throughout the year, wouldn't we be better off to go with just the comprehensive plan? Because it encompasses that anyway?
Tammy, with this plan also, we'll be able to get emergency services. There are shifts that will go work.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So, you know, if what we're doing now is only doing 33%, and this is going to do, where we're working to try to get 100% out of it, but at least 90 is a minimum. And it gives us all the coaching for the 50% of the population that's going to wind up classified as high-risk. But right now, we're doing one day. Yes, I may be classified as high-risk, but that's the end of it. This is a much better option, in my opinion, than what we're currently doing, and doing a duplication of things that we can do all in one program.
Well, what is over $10,000 spent on besides the wellness fair? What else?
Just to go to additional training, any other training programs that we have for the year, and any type of safety meetings or safety items and wellness items that need to be purchased for the year. So, we have a variety, like we have the, as he was mentioning, one example is the Maintain No Gain program that we host. We have a holiday challenge. We used to have a weight loss challenge, but we changed it to Maintain No Gain. And so, any materials and senses that we purchase for those funds help them pass. Lunch and learns, any additional training that we have where we're going to bring somebody in to do a demonstration that they possibly would be able to afford it out of that fund.
Do you usually spend all of the $10,000?
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Whether it's on training or, like I said, we can also, we've used the funds before to help purchase ATDs. We've used the funds before to help purchase new birthday kits for apartments. So, if there's material items that fall under a health and wellness degree, then we can use those funds for that as well.
CPR training as well.
What?
CPR training.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I'm kidding.
The only thing that I'm really, we're already doing the biometric testing that is incorporated in this plan. I mean, we have ongoing stuff that's, you know, addressing some of this with outside third parties coming in and talking about things. We're not doing the individual one-on-one coaching. I assume that there's still going to be some admin support that's going to be needed out of HR, even implementing a program like this? I mean, is that...
Well, this team would meet with admin and HR to discuss how do we roll it out? What communications do you want? And really just kind of be the champions of it. But as far as maintaining eligibility for the program, our team will do that with the vendor. And any data that comes back will be tracked by the vendor of who completed it so that we know who's eligible for an incentive or receives a surcharge. They're going to track all of that.
They track that, they track that.
Yeah, they track it. And they'll provide you with great aggregate data to show you what are your risk factors? Where are we seeing, you know, what's driving the risk on the plan? And what are the outreaches that they are making to make an impact? And they'll, you know, advise these people. Coaching is the biggest piece that makes the impact. You know, everyone can walk out with that biometric screening and not really understand what does this mean? I mean, I've done it 100 times. What does this mean? And I'm Googling these numbers, is this okay? And, but to have a coach that's going to follow you through your progress and tailor a program to you, that's where we see the biggest impact. And really working with your physician as well. That coach will say, hey, this is what we need to be talking to your physician about when you go in for your follow-up treatments. If your A1C is high, your blood pressure's high, what do we need to do differently?
And that coach is a doctor, or that coach is just like a...
There normally are ins, and they've got different certifications to be a wellness coach. They're not physicians.
How often would they always see the coach, or maybe?
The high-risk would see them four times during the year.
Well, if you're not high-risk?
High-risk would just see them the one time after you do your screening to read that 30-minute session, or review your results, talk about what does everything mean? What do I need to improve on? How do I do that if it's changed my appetite? What, you know, or my diet, not maybe my appetite, but what can I change?
Well, that'd be good too.
Yeah, that would help. They can give you tricks on that. But yeah, and so, everyone gets that 30-minute coaching.
Well, going back to that as well, when you're talking about a 50% high-risk category, all these things are well and good. You have the weight challenge and all that stuff during the holidays, but the 50% high-risk are not participating in that. That's where we got to get people, that's where we got to get to. We got to get to the people that are high-risk. That's where we need to be spending our money to get those. That's where we're going to save the most money. I mean, if I'm, I mean, I already know that I'm overweight. Look in the mirror and tell that. So, you know, if I'm not doing anything about that, then I've become more, let's say, I'm going to stay in the high-risk category. So, you know, as she said, if I'm not classified as high-risk, I'm probably not going to fall into those 25 or 30 people who are spending more than $50,000 or $100,000 unless something catastrophic happens to me and I'm in a car wreck or something like that. So, my health is probably going to be okay. So, is there some way that we can kind of look at what we're doing, eliminate all the duplication of stuff that we're doing, and continue to do things like CPR classes and things like that? Because those are very important. We could save somebody's life with that. So, find out what the cost for those non-duplicated things are versus what this is going to give us. Set aside the money for that, and then spend the rest of that, or at least my thought would be to spend the rest of that on this program.
What we've been doing is not working because the premiums has continued to go sky-high.
I don't know.
So, I...
Yes and no. I mean, we might not know that we've prevented something that could be higher, I guess. But to your point, it still is going up.
Yeah, it's still going up.
But medical costs are going up. I mean, they can look at you, and they don't think, that's $100, $150. That's, that keeps going up. You can still have the same problems, but go to the doctor year after year, and you see it just going up, up, up.
Yeah, and so, we see national trends are at 8% to 9%. So, we're well outside of that, and it really is those high claims driving it. And when I say national trends, that means that's that rising cost of care and aging population that we can just expect if we didn't, you know, everything stayed the same, the same claims, that they're going to cost us 8% to 9% more in the following year. But by us seeing, you know, 25%, 12% over that year over year, there's definitely something that's going to be back.
Other things besides, yeah.
Timing-wise, are we, in order to get the $20,000, we have to make a commitment that simultaneously with our renewal? Or do we have more time to look at potential other options with the wellness program?
You have more time on the wellness program. So, we've secured the $20,000 from Anthem, and we can use that however you see fit. So, if you want to look at other options, or maybe how we pull in other vendors, then we can do that, and you still have that $20,000 with your renewal. So, you've got time there. And, you know, it's some... And, you know, it's something that we can roll out after the renewal and just have separate communication of this is our new wellness program, what you need to do, how it's going to work and, you know, what incentives or surcharges are going to apply.
Yeah, I think it's important to Chairman's point is let's find out what we're doing already and how we can mesh these programs together. And is this particular proposal you're giving us the best one? It's the only one we've seen? So I don't know if there's any other options or even Commissioner Saffield and I were talking on that. We got a local doctor, could they come in for a certain price and do something at a greater level or even less than what one of these programs would be? I don't know if you've ever seen that, where a local physician has the ability to administer some of this stuff?
We've worked with like the local health department to come in and administer the screenings. And then we see how can we pull that back into coaching? So we can definitely look like, look at that, have our wellness consultant, you know, look at local physicians or facilities that might be able to provide the same service. So we're completely open to that.
I definitely think we've got to do something to, Commissioner Nixon's point is slow down, let's trim that we have.
And I'd like to see some options, like you just said.
Sure.
You have the doctors and then the healthcare, the, what is it? The ones? No, the.
Health department.
The health, the health department.
Yes.
Sure, there's their option to be good.
Yeah, we're doing that in Merryweather County, just starting that with the health department there. So that will be a different program with a different doctor.
From what you've seen with the other counties that do this wellness, comprehensive wellness, what, what is it? Is it money that does motivate people? What is the number one thing that motivates people?
It's that money in their paycheck. Because that's going to hit everybody's pocket. Where, you know, not everybody's going to care about, you know, what prize I might win or, you know, even that deductible. Like I said, not everybody's even saying, even planning to meet their deductible. Most of us don't at a year. And so that's not an incentive for everybody. But if we want to get that 90% in higher participation, hitting everybody in the paycheck is where it makes.
And has it lowered premiums? Has it lowered the cost?
Absolutely, yeah.
Well, what has got to do with that?
Yeah, we have several case studies where we've worked with city and county governments on this type of program and seen long-term stabilization of their risk. And that's why we're recommending it. We don't get any compensation out of this type of program. But, you know, our job is to help our clients save money on their health insurance. And so this is what we see works time after time. City of Albany is my favorite example. And I presented with them last year at a conference that they, we put in a comprehensive wellness program for them and they were seeing skyrocketing costs year over year. After we put in the program, year two, they saw just a steep decline in their overall claims cost and it has stayed steady for six years. And they've had no claim design changes, no employee contribution increases, and the city's contribution increases have been around 1% increase every year. So it has just been hugely impactful. And, you know, that's a population where they've got some things that they're fighting against and just kind of overall demographics and the health of the population, but they've seen a lot of success.
Just a high little idea, as we fund the Good Shepherd Clinic, which is a 501(c)(3) clinic that we have in our community, this is probably a legal question at some point, not for tonight's conversation, but be interested to see if we can figure out if they could serve our employees if we increased our contribution to them. Because we're already contributing some to them, they're already making a great impact in the community. But if there's an opportunity to partner with them somehow, a bit of public, nonprofit partnership of some sort. Just investigate that.
Okay, so I'll get into the next part. We've got time on the wellness and we can come back with some other options for you all. But really where we do need decisions are around the renewal. And so I did include here a renewal history just to give you an idea of the impact of the increased claims expense on our renewals year over year. For plan year 2018, we had an 83% loss ratio. And loss ratio is just overall comparison of premium versus claims. Meaning that in this scenario, for every dollar that we paid in in premium, Blue Cross Blue Shield paid out 83 cents in claims expense. So target for most carriers is around 75% loss ratio. And that means that they've got enough to pay claims, they can pay overhead, and then they're also paying all the administrative costs to the plan. So with that 83% loss ratio, we did get a favorable renewal at 2.9%. We negotiated that down to 1.3's overall $44,000 premium increase. 2019, when we started to see those claims spike towards the end of the 2018 plan year, we were running at 100% loss ratio. That drove a 16.6% renewal increase, negotiated that to 14.6. And then we were able to come back with an option for the county to be fully insured within the ACCG pool. And so that's where you are now. And that change took our renewal last year to 4.3% or over $47,000. So it saved almost $473,000 from the initial renewal option. That pool, we are pooled with other city and county governments and the underwriting of the health plan. So what that does is any claims over $100,000, and once it hits $100,000, does not count against the county. So that's pooled out. So if one hits $200,000, up to $100,000 is all that we are accounting for. So it's a stop-loss type of reinsurance policy on a fully insured plan. It also blends the county's experience with ACCG pool. And so for this renewal, the loss ratio ran at 104%. And the ACCG block loss ratio, so all the other cities and counties that are within this pool or in this block, ran at 96.8. So blending that with the block brought our overall loss ratio down to underwrite the plan. So being within the block did benefit the county versus if we stood on our own. So we ended up at a 95.8% loss ratio. The initial renewal that came out from Anthem was 35.5%, almost $1.4 million increase. NFP, in reviewing the underwriting, identified several errors in how Anthem was calculating that renewal, went back to them with those points, and so they did revise those calculations. And the revised renewal that was released was 20.3% or $788,000 premium increase. That was negotiated to 17.5, so $678,000 in premium. We were also able to secure another 2.5% discount, bringing the renewal down to 15% if we package the dental life and voluntary life of Anthem. So that's another $97,000 in savings. So that with no claim design changes brings the overall increase to $582,000, $206,000 less than the corrective renewal. So we did a full marketing and looked at all the carriers' options within the market. And so we did have a competitive proposal from Cigna that came in about 13% increase. So a little bit less than Anthem, not a huge change. And then QMNA provided a proposal that was right around 15% as well. Aetna and United Healthcare declined to provide a proposal because they were uncompetitive. So we focused on claim design changes with Anthem to realize additional savings. And here we're looking at the current plans compared to the alternate plans. Currently, we have an HMO, a POS, and an HSA, Health Savings Account Eligible Plan. There's only one participant in that HSA plan. So majority are in the HMO now, 194 employees in the HMO, 59 in the POS. The POS is the less expensive of the two options because it has a higher deductible and a higher out-of-pocket maximum. Overall, the difference in an HMO and POS is the network is really the same, so same network of doctors. HMO, you can't go out of network. POS, you can go out of network. If you chose to, you just pay more in out-of-pocket costs. With this, we're proposing that the POS be the base plan that the county contribute to. And then if employees want to keep their HMO plan, then they could pay the difference to keep that HMO.
Quick, let me point out clarification. Historically, the HMO has been the lower of the two, between HMO and POS from a cost standpoint? Is that correct?
No, it's higher premium, lower out-of-pocket for the member.
Always been the way, okay.
Yes. So it's a richer benefit plan. So here, we're still keeping it a richer benefit plan, but we are proposing some changes to bring down that overall increase. The changes are highlighted in yellow. And so yellow, we'll see the deductible changing from $1,000 for an individual, $1,500 on the new HMO plan, and the family going from $3,000 to $4,500. Remember, on both of these plans, any one individual in the family only has to meet that single deductible and then they're covered. You're just maxed out as a family if you all had expenses going towards deductible. You don't have to meet the family just because you have family coverage. Once you meet your deductible, the plan continues to pay 80% of the cost, just like it does now. And we're proposing an increase to the out-of-pocket maximum from $2,500 single to $3,500 single. We're proposing that because the county has not kept up with the changes in ACA that have accumulated costs towards the out-of-pocket maximum. So when ACA came around, they required that now, instead of just your co-insurance, that 20% that you pay going towards your out-of-pocket maximum, now your deductible counts towards that, all your copays. So there's a lot more plan liability if we don't increase the out-of-pocket maximum. And so the county hasn't really kept in stride with that. From our block of business, and we work with over 50 public entities within Georgia, the average at right now is $7,900 out-of-pocket maximum. The ACA maximum for this year is $8,150. So still at $3,500, we're well below benchmarks of other city and county governments, school districts, and well below what ACA is saying the maximum can be. So out-of-pocket maximum, again, includes the deductible, 20% co-insurance, and all their copays, including prescription drugs. It really is a worst-case scenario for a member on the plan that if they pay $3,500 out-of-pocket, the plan pays 100% after that. No changes to the coverage for inpatient, outpatient, hospital care, no changes to urgent care. But we are proposing on both of these plans, a 20% co-insurance on emergency room utilization in addition to the copay. And really what that strives to do is to have consumers exposed to the cost of emergency room visits so that they're more consumer-minded in what their options are when they're using the emergency room. When I look at your emergency room utilization over the last 12 months, 44% of the visits were classified as avoidable emergency room visits. And so primary diagnosis was headache, nausea, and vomiting. And so Anthem classifies these visits as avoidable ER visits and the average cost for those was $2,200. So really, it can make an impact if people understand the cost of the emergency room care and can choose going to urgent care or their primary care physician whenever possible.
I wonder why they don't go to urgent care?
Sometimes it's held a habit that a lot of people use that as their primary care, unfortunately. And sometimes it's just, well, I don't have time to go right now, but I'll go tonight or I'll go this weekend. And when it's more convenient for them, and they end up going to the emergency room.
I think one thing we did last year, we, we as a board decided to fund 100% of our teledoc, which is a fast-growing, cost-effective way to try to mitigate some of those, or at least answer those questions on the front end before they do go, you know, seek other attention somewhere else. But that, I don't know what our participation rate is in teledoc. But that comes down to, again, communication, communication, communication.
Yeah, yeah, we've had great participation since that's rolled out to the entire population. And that's a great point, that that's a way if someone's sick at night on the weekends, they can get their prescription called in. A lot of times is they need an antibiotic and they'll call it into their pharmacy. Or they may need advice, should I go to the emergency room? Or take my child to the emergency room? Do I need to go? And so that's a great way to just provide education and additional service to avoid that visit.
So this extra 20% is added on to the cost of the emergency room to discourage patients from going?
Yeah, so if they go to the emergency room, they pay 20% of the overall cost. So now they're exposed to how expensive that emergency room is.
And we didn't have that last year.
We just had a flat copay, the $300 copay.
Maybe add 30%.
So no other changes, no changes to prescription drug coverage on the HMO plan. POS plan, we're looking at slight changes on the copays that now your PCP copay actually goes down from $35 to $30, and specialist copay goes up from $45 to $60. And then we are also looking at an increase in the deductible here, $2,500 for an individual, $7,500 for a family. And then on this plan, pushing that out-of-pocket maximum up in line where benchmarks are at, at $7,900 for an individual, $15,800 for a family. Same change on the emergency room, the 20%. And then we are looking at slight increases here on the prescription drugs. A $5 increase to tier one copays, $5 increase to tier two, and then a $10 increase to tier three. That tier four are specialty medications, so those high-cost drugs that cost thousands of dollars a month. Those are looking at 25% up to $350 instead of the current max at $200. And then with this recommendation, because we just had one person in the HSA, the conversation was just to offer the POS plan and replace a HSA. So we're just showing a comparison there. So that brings the overall increase down to 8.3% or $321,000. As far as employee contributions, the next slide compares the current monthly contribution to what is proposed with the county, again, contributing to the POS plan as the base plan option. And then employees pay the entire difference for that HMO richer benefit. And so here you'll see that ER, the employer contribution is the same on both plans, the POS and the HMO. So with this scenario, anyone on the POS plan would not see an increase in their payroll deductions. The HMO plan would see an increase if they stay on that plan. But if they move to the POS, they actually pay a lower cost than what they're paying now. So someone on the HMO right now is paying $377.80 a month for family coverage. They could move to the POS and pay $364.70. So there's an opportunity for people to save money by moving to that POS plan.
But the benefits are not as great.
That is the higher deductible and the higher out-of-pocket maximum.
The benefits are same, just those main differences. I mean, they still go to the same doctors they normally go to, which I think is a big concern to people. And they now.
They go to somewhere else if they choose, can they?
Right.
With the POS.
They go out of network.
But they still have to pay more if they do that?
Yeah, if you go out of network, there's no copays, you pay deductible for everything. So we don't see many people go out of network unless it's absolutely necessary. Some cancer treatments will go out of network. But day-to-day doctor's office visits, most people stay within the network. And with these plans, great benefits of still having your copays that you get to just pay your flat copay to go to the doctor. And we talked about, most people don't meet that deductible or definitely don't meet that out-of-pocket maximum year over year. So if I'm just going from my regular visits to my PCP, my specialist, and filling my prescription, I'm not going to see much change in my overall coverage.
Well, we have 2% of our people who go out of.
That mean the out-of-pocket maximum, yeah.
So hypothetically, if I'm in a HMO family plan, the proposed renewal changes, my contribution, if I stayed on HMO, my contribution goes from $377.80 to $577.13. If I choose to move to the POS, my contribution, if I was on HMO, goes from $377.80 to $364.70.
Correct.
So in theory, if I was on a HMO and decided to go to the POS, that's a savings of $577.13 minus $364.70, so it's $212 a month. And since the main differences are deductible increases, I in theory can take that same amount of money to 12 and put it into an FSA account. Times 12, that's $2,548 a year that I could utilize towards my copays. I could utilize it towards medications, I could utilize it towards out-of-pockets, any medical expense.
And the eye vision.
And dome vision, and I can roll over $500 with that.
Now $550 with COVID-19, IRS is allowing $550. They've all, I know, $50.
I wonder what we're portraying out of them.
But I think the better news is that they've also. But I think the better news is that they've also brought back in over-the-counter medications, which ACA took out of the FSA, but with COVID-19, IRS is allowing that back in as an eligible expense.
So realistically, I mean, again, the incentive to go from an HMO to a POS monetarily out-of-pocket expense the deductibles, but you can really make that back up in your own health savings account essentially.
Right, the cover, the whole...
And benefit, and benefit better. And only two percent of our people even utilize them, hit the maximum.
That is, yeah, it's not common.
So that's not common?
To hit your out-of-pocket maximum? No, it's the, those very catastrophic claims that hit that.
No.
And then just the last section I have for you is because we are proposing that additional ninety-seven thousand dollars in savings on the health plan by packaging the other lines with Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield, just a comparison, is that the dental with Anthem is no cost increase, so it's matching our current benefits, same rates, and it's also guaranteed for two years. That does not lock us into Anthem for two years, we could change next year if we wanted, it just means that they can't increase the rates next year. And also, with the vision is currently with Anthem and no increase, and that will mean one ID card for members for their medical, dental, and vision with that package. So you're not going to have those separate ID cards, one for all benefit coverages. The life insurance with Anthem is no increase, Lincoln was actually proposing a renewal increase of fifty-five hundred dollars, so it does save in that, and then it's a two-year rate guarantee. Voluntary life that the employees pay for that additional term life coverage is also no increase, guaranteed for two years, and we've been able to secure an open enrollment with no health questions. So that means that all employees and their spouses could be covered up to the guaranteed issue without answering health questions this year, even if they declined it in the past. And then short-term disability and long-term disability, Anthem did not propose on that as well as the rest of the market, and so those renewal increases have been delayed by Lincoln because of COVID-19 to February first, instead of July first, and we are looking at a nineteen percent increase and a twenty percent increase on those two employees do fund the cost of the disability. So that's something that we can definitely readdress as that renewal comes up in February.
Well, if you were really good, you'd give us a two-year rate guarantee on our health.
Drink bowl!
Yeah, I'm thinking, I don't know that I've ever seen that, maybe like seventeen years ago, when the costs were lower. But, you know, really being within that ACCG pool does help to that of mitigating against those fluctuations that we see and we have seen the last couple of years. So that's kind of the risk pool that's protecting us right now. Now, as we see a turn in the trend, and we put in these programs to help improve the health of the population, I would say we look at coming out of that pool again and standing on our own. But right now, we really need that pool, and it did help us this year. That's all I have for you. Any other questions?
Total high watermark on your alternate plan, if you want to go back, or go back a couple of slides, remember, yeah.
Okay.
One more.
The contributions?
Go back a moment, they're right there. So, is this the hybrid plan that we had discussed with a few of you, which is paying for the, paying, county continue to pay for the split that we currently have, which is approximately eighty-twenty split, and we pay for the POS, which seems to be a good fit for the majority of our population, but still offer the HMO for those that may, for whatever reason it may be. And as we were going through this, one thing that, because I'm trying to think, why would somebody want to stay on the HMO versus going to the POS? I mean, the only thing that really caught my eye was if I had a tier four drug, a tier four specialty drug goes on HMO maxes two hundred versus three fifty, if I had a couple of those, then it might make sense to stay on the HMO.
Most people don't have more than one of those, those are very high-cost drugs.
Right.
And the, most of those, there's manufacturer assistance that we can review with the patients, where they won't pay anything.
Okay, yeah, and I'm just trying to pull out, why would somebody want to stay on the HMO versus going to the POS to begin with? And so, I like the same commitment that we had to employees of offering a quality health insurance plan, in the same sense, if they want to go to the HMO, that's on them, and they have that flexibility versus us just cutting the plan completely. It still gives them that option if they so desire, but I think what's the critical component of this is the communication and the education piece. And we have to make sure that employees understand the differences between the two, let them make their own decision.
Yeah, absolutely, so we'll definitely help in that, and evaluate, providing the communication of the plan, but also the one-on-one education with employees to talk about, you know, what are my conditions, what are my drugs, what do I have coming up in the year, or my family has coming up in the year, and help them really understand what is the difference between what you're paying out of your paycheck versus what you pay out-of-pocket in the health plan with the deductible and the out-of-pocket maximum.
And following up on that, if we were to go with that hybrid plan of offering the HMO, but it would be only employees pay the difference over the POS, if our, if employee count stayed, just as it is now, for whatever reason, people didn't want to switch out of the HMO, which, I mean, just statistically difficult, the high-water mark out-of-pocket expense for the county, I believe, was twenty-seven thousand dollars, if the population stays in the current spread. The lowest it would go would be seventy-nine hundred dollars, which would be if everybody migrated over to the POS.
Well, the way I have modeled this is that the county's paying the same for both plans, so it doesn't matter which one they choose, the county's going to pay the exact same amount. So you see that five twenty-one twenty-five for the single coverage and the ER entry on the right, that's what the county pays by tier, and you're paying the same amount for the HMO and the POS.
The employee would just pay the difference.
Right, the employees pay the difference, so the county's paying the exact same amount for either plan, so it doesn't matter which one they choose.
They just pay the employee side.
Right, they're paying the difference in the premium, because that plan costs more, the county says, hey, we're paying five twenty-one twenty-five, you pay the difference if you want that.
So there's not a variation between what we pay to POS versus they do. So our high watermark is twenty-seven thousand.
Twenty-seven thousand, yeah.
Twenty-seven thousand, David?
Yes, well, I did a little bit.
Talk about, the, last year we talked about the spouses, and the surcharge for those, talk about that, how many people would that include, and would there be a savings there, or do we need to let him pay some of that? What does the board feel about that?
Yeah, so there's definitely an option to have a surcharge for spouses if they have other coverage, so we can assist with that of, you know, having them sign an affidavit and proving that they don't have other coverage through their employer. We typically see that surcharge being fifty to a hundred dollars a month. That will cause some movement for spouses to come off of the plan, and when we look at your overall cost, spouses make up as much as employees do, and that's why we're proposing that they would be included in the wellness program. So it's something that you can look at, you know, really, with ACA, there's no requirement that you even offer coverage to spouses, so there's a lot of flexibility in what you can do in their coverage or what you charge them for coverage.
I would like to know what it would be if we didn't offer coverage to spouses.
Yeah, so just...
Just so you have the option to get it somewhere else?
Yeah, if they have the option, because some may not work, they may stay home, if they have the option, yes, I'd like to know what that is.
Yeah, so what I'll do is I'll look at our other city and county governments that do that, and we'll look at an average of how many typically come off. I'd say it's probably less than ten percent that would come off the plan, because most of them don't have other coverage, because most employers are paying more for single coverage than they do for family, so it normally makes sense for a spouse to take their employer's coverage versus the family, but we can look at what that average is of how it impacts participation.
And then you've got, I think you said last year, you just, they have to sign an affidavit saying that they're not an ability to access a health plan.
Right, yes.
Looking for an Affordable Healthcare Act.
Other question?
Chairman, can I ask, Vicky, I don't want to put you on the spot, can I ask Vicky a question? I know we put, Billy has put a hundred thousand dollars in the budget to cover any kind of increase in insurance, but how much did we save roughly during the year, but I guess if we figured for our ex-homer employees, found the coverage, and we didn't use all that money, if we got money left over in insurance, you know, I'll say, I guess for employee benefit, we didn't use all the employee benefit in the budget?
I, I don't know, I'd have to, I would have to go back to...
If it was possible, we wouldn't have touched that hundred thousand dollars, right?
That's, that's true. I know last year, in nineteen, we did not have...
We didn't have to in nineteen?
We didn't have to use the hundred thousand, no.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah, so I mean, if you, if we figure out what we're going to do on the wellness plan, this twenty-seven thousand, that's seventy-three five hundred, so we'll still...
Life's your additional ten, now I have them for the wellness plan.
Yeah, that's true. One thing that I've made clear last year, and I'll reverberate again this year, is benefits that we offer, we've had the conversation multiple times on, on the total benefit package that we offer our employees, and how rich it is. And we recently did some pay increases, we did some health, or some retirement increases, and the contributions that we put into employees, I know a lot of those employees think that we give a raise and they turn out and take away in other factors, but that is never the intent that this board has had, and nor is, you know, we don't control claims activity, we're trying to do things to mitigate it, because it's going to lower our cost as well as employee cost. And so I did have Vicky pull, just from a data standpoint, just to point the record, that since two thousand sixteen, the average cost per employee, and I, and I don't like the word cost, I mean, the average investment that we make per employee has increased six thousand dollars. So for every employee, we've either done salary increases, absorbed some health insurance, done better retirement plans, so there's been an upward trend in the last four years of increases for every single employee on average, because I know we have fluctuations in employee FTE counts, but I just think it's important that we communicate that, that we do everything we can, and we constantly want to be competitive in the marketplace, and health insurance is a big factor, it's a bigger factor today than it was five, ten years ago, and the weight that it carries for an employee to have a good health insurance plan carries a lot bigger weight than it did, so I just want that to be known, that this board does, and I'm sure every single one of us echoes that, that we do everything we can to offer the best benefits we can, but we also are mindful that we serve twenty-six thousand citizens, and some of those citizens don't have any health insurance, and they can't afford their own health insurance. So, you know, we looked at a renewal, if we kept it flat on, you know, the same deductibles and everything we had, it was, it was over half a million dollars, and to me, that's, that's not fair to the citizens who are out there that pay their taxes and work hard, and some of them still don't even have their own insurance. So I think this is a good compromise, and it does continue to support our ideas of quality, rich health insurance plans, but at the same time be mindful of where those dollars come from.
Other questions from this start?
I'd just like to make a comment, thank you, Chris, for negotiating down and working with them to get this down to affordable status.
Other question. Brad, do we need to move this forward, or do we have time to wait? What, what are you wanting to do?
Well, I would like to move it forward, time is of the essence, I think we have some questions that need to be...
What can you do about the questions?
Well, on the wellness, right, so we've got time on wellness, what we really need to decide on today are those plan options, and then the spousal surcharge, we can come back at a later time and implement that as well. So I think we're timing of open enrollment, really what we are looking for is approval of those plan options, and then that, that the county contributes to the POS, and employees pay the difference for the HMO.
You have to notice that council's twenty-six?
Twenty-seven thousand.
Twenty-seven thousand.
The spousal surcharge, I have to bring back to the wellness, and we consider that at the same time as part of that program.
Are you all moving forward?
No, I've been pouring over this stuff, so I'm okay with moving forward.
I am too, if we can come back to these questions.
Okay, all right, we'll move that forward.
We want to set a, set a date of when we want to, let's put it in stone now, so we don't let it get too far down the road on the wellness, as well as the spouse situation. Well, open enrollment is what, through, when's this thing effective, July first?
This is maybe July first, and we're looking at starting open enrollment middle of next month.
Does thirty days give us enough time to do some more research on these other aspects of it?
Yes.
So we can move it forward and figure out where we're going to be tonight, and then amend if we're going to do the spousal thing, or unfollow that. But I'd like to, let's, let's be diligent about moving that, getting rest of that information through thirty days.
You can add that into the motion, that, yeah, we may want to get that.
Sure.
Chairman, I just want, I want to thank Brad, his dad, and Dave, and Vicky too, because there's been a lot of meetings and a lot of numbers crunching, so thank y'all to bring this to us, and echo what Chris said, I think it's, we went from half a million dollars down to twenty-seven thousand dollars, that's, that's pretty good crunching. And with the policy that, if they take the policy that's out there, that's, it's a, really, it's not going up as far as the premiums, I know the out-of-pocket, and I ain't look hard at it too, but when I saw the two percent, which, two percent still affected somebody, but hopefully if we need a run for them, it won't affect that somebody. And, and we've, like I said, we've, we've got to communicate with the people, tell them what they got, and give them some options, and give them people to talk to, and different ways of ordering medicine, I mean, I found out if I could order, if my good doctor over here would write my prescription for three months, which he did, I could get a month free.
And if I need.
And that's the things we've got to communicate to them and do things, I mean, I don't know if that's that way now with all medications, but any way they can save a dollar, we need to make sure they know that.
Yeah, and we educate them on program, like GoodRx, you go online and you can shop the cost of your prescription, and often, a prescription can be much more or less expensive if you go to a different pharmacy, like Kroger versus CBS, and so just looking at that, being more consumer-minded, and understand how can you save on these medical expenses and prescriptions.
But just, I don't think I'll...
And one of the things that we're working with NFP on is that communication and education process, that I don't think you've had in the past.
Right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next to the presentation, a financial status report for the period of January one through April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty, Chief Financial Officer, Vicky Knapp.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners, it's nice to see all of you again, feels like it's been a long time.
Or say part of us.
I know. I hate to bombard, bombard you all with numbers since you just went through all this, but I think this kind of goes hand in hand, so these are, this is some important information. Typically, I would give you a report for a quarter, which is three months, but the cause of COVID-19 and everything, it's been delayed a little bit, so I thought, well, I'll just go ahead and do the first third year. The majority of this conversation will be about General Fund. General Fund is the main operating fund of the county, and that's the one that most citizens are concerned about, because that's where their property tax money goes, and it funds the majority of operations of the county. The original budget... The original budget for two thousand and twenty was twenty-nine point nine million. The current budget stands at thirty point nine million. Revenue that we receive in general fund through the end of April is seven point six million, and that's twenty-four point seven percent of budget. The expenditure for the total general fund is at nine point one million, and that's twenty-nine point four percent of the budget. What happens is as the, this year progresses, progresses, we don't normally reach breakeven where revenues are equal to or greater than expenditures, which we usually after about the third quarter. That's when, in October, we normally get the insurance premium tax, that's usually over a million. That usually helps to bump us over to where we're actually kind of even or above. In comparison, last year, I thought this was kind of interesting because it, it looks like we're really running pretty close to where we were last year as far as percentage. Last year, at the same time, we were at twenty-five percent of revenues. That's the very far right column. And then at, for expenditures, we were at twenty-nine point two. So it's, it's very close to where we were last year.
This is through what date?
Uh, April thirtieth. April thirtieth, mhm. The, uh, the original budget for nineteen was at twenty-seven point one million, and the amended budget as of April thirtieth was at twenty, just a little over twenty-nine million. Okay, this will break out the revenues that we put into general fund. We have several different categories. There's lots of light items that go into these categories, but this kind of groups them in total. Our largest category is taxes, and that includes property tax. We budgeted this year fifteen point three million. We stand at four point eight or forty-nine point seven percent of the budget. Our next largest revenue source for general fund is our local option sales tax, and I'm going to go into a little more detail about that from the next slide. Uh, we budgeted eight point one million, and we're at one point six. Licenses and permits, the next largest, I know it's not the next largest, it's one point two million, and we're at three hundred fourteen thousand. And then charges for services, we budgeted a little over two million, and we're at five hundred seventy-seven thousand. We also have intergovernmental revenues, fines and forfeitures, investment income, donations, miscellaneous, and other financing sources. Okay, we do have some revenues that will potentially be impacted by the COVID- nineteen, and these are probably the, the largest categories. First, we lost. Then also, we probably will see an impact for our charges for services at the parks. And we will most likely see some changes or decreases in fines and forfeitures because the courts have been closed. Licenses and permits as well, building permits, inspection fees, once everything kind of gets back open, these revenues could come back in, you know, gangbusters, we just really don't know. So, um, but I do want to, want you to be aware that we could see some potential decreases. Okay, um, this is a little bit more detail on our local option sales tax. This chart shows what we receive each month, January, February, and March. Well, what happens is the, the, um, taxes are collected by the state in January, and then we receive them in February, so it always lags a month behind. We have not yet received the tax money for April. But anyway, year to date, last year, we received one point seven million, um, as of the same period, and then this year, we received one point six million. So it's a total decrease of two point four percent for the year, or forty-one thousand dollars, a little over forty-one thousand dollars less this year than last year. Also, I did put a note on here that the cause most of the retail is closed in April, other than Walmart and Home Depot and a few other things. It's expected that the tax to be received in May for April will be the lowest of the year. And that's what caused everything to shut down for April. But I do think that things will start picking back up as things open up. I've heard that there's a lot of activity down four hundred, and, um, online sales probably will account for some sales tax too for us. So we just have to kind of wait and see. We should get the numbers for April, that we, the tax that we receive in April, next week sometime. So as soon as we get that, we'll let you know.
Just, so for March, obviously, the first two months we were up, that was.
We were.
Pre-COVID. Um, March was our first real impact in a negative manner, and that dollar amount was sixty-one thousand. So if we, so if we wind up, call it thirty, thirty percent down, worst case, I don't see that. Maybe with, I mean, so let's just say thirty percent down, then you're looking at those three, one hundred eighty-three thousand down for, for that, right?
Potentially.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I wish I had a crystal ball, I don't. We just have to hope that, you know, things will start picking. I think we will see a, after we get this receipt for this month, or last month, it'll be the lowest, and then I think we'll see a gradual decline.
True.
Okay, next we'll look at the expenditures for general fund. We have multiple departments. All of these departments are grouped into categories. So these are the departments that are grouped in what's called general government. You've got Board of Commissioners, County Administration, Elections, General Government, Finance, Information Technology, Human Resources, Tax Commissioner, Tax Assessor, Board of Legalization, Risk Management, Facilities, and Public Relations. These departments all total five point eight million for budget. Actual year-to-date is one point seven million, and all these departments together are at thirty point five percent of budget. For this time period, your benchmark is like thirty-three percent, and that's if you take the whole year and divide it by twelve months, and then you're looking at four months, so it's hundred thirty-three percent. Next category we'll look at are all the judicial departments. We have Superior Court, Clerk of Court, District Attorney, magistrate court, parole court, juvenile court, and public defender. All of these departments total three point five million. Year-to-date expenses are nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand, and they're at twenty-seven point six percent of budget. Next, we'll look at the sheriff. He's classified as public safety, but we always pull, pull him out because he is an elected official. And I think he, he likes to see what's, you know, going on with his departments, and I think everyone else does too, kind of separate the public safety. We have his Sheriff's Administration, K-9, jail, school traffic management, SROs, donations, court services, and special event officers. His general fund budget stands right now at eight point six million. He has spent two point three million, and that's twenty-seven point six percent of budget. Again, under the thirty-three percent. The other part of public safety are the Departments of Marshals, Fire, Fire Marshal and Prevention, EMS, Coroner, EMA, and Humane Society. And these departments total five point five million. Year-to-date through the end of April, they expended one point three million, and we're at twenty-four point nine percent of budget. Public Works has two, two departments that have Administration and Roads, and their total budget is one point nine million, and they spend just a little over half a million, and they're at twenty-five point seven percent of budget. Health and Welfare includes the departments of Health Department, Good Shepherd Clinic, CASA, DFAX, No One Alone, Indian Welfare, Senior Center, Senior, Senior Services, Donations, and Medicare Silver Sneakers. And these departments total three hundred and seventy thousand in budget, and year-to-date is a little over eighty-four thousand. They're at twenty-two percent of budget. Next is Recreation and Culture, and that's our parks, excuse me, and the library. And this totals one point seven million, and they're at four hundred ninety-seven thousand, or twenty-eight point two percent of budget. Housing and Development includes Conservation through the County Extension Office, Planning and Development, and the Development Authority. These departments total eight hundred and forty-four thousand. Year-to-date, they're at three hundred and one thousand, or thirty-five percent of budget. And we have other financing uses. These are transfers that we do to other funds that the county maintains. We do a transfer to Family Connection, transfer for grants, capital, fleet, nine-one-one, and our GIS department. These, these transfers total up two point three million. And year-to-date, we're at one point one million, or forty-eight percent of the budget. A lot of this has to do with the timing. Sometimes we do the, we have to do them earlier or later, so it, it kind of eans out at the end of the year, but most of this is just mainly because of timing. I wanted you to see this. I took all the department's expenses for this period of January through April. And as I said before, it totals nine point one million dollars. But if you take everything that's been spent on salaries, purchase contracts, supplies, capital, everything else, we've spent almost fifty-nine percent of every dollar spent year-to-date has gone to employees. And I think this is important to see, because your, your employees, and you all said, your employees are your greatest assets, and you all have really worked hard to provide that investment in these employees. And, um, government is a service, and it takes people to provide that service. So, um, but I, I thought this was an interesting, interesting little bit of information for you. And then, um, this is just a pie chart. It shows the total budget for general fund, and it shows that sixty-five percent of the general fund budget is budgeted for salaries and benefits. The next largest category is purchase contracts and services at eleven percent, and then supplies at nine percent. We had a couple of significant changes to the general fund budget this year. We had an eight hundred and thirty-six thousand dollar increase for the salary changes resulting from our salary study, and then a seventy thousand dollar increase for the retirement contribution increase, so we went from four to five percent.
Interesting, you go back two pages, you get debt service one percent. That's not typical for.
No, it's not. We're very fortunate. We are very, very fortunate. And I want to talk a little bit about fund balance. People talk about fund balance, and it's kind of looked at like this pot of cash, but it's, it's really not. There's several things that go into that. You have inventory, you have prepaid. There's other things that are really part of that fund balance. And from an accounting standpoint, standpoint, fund balance is actually your assets less your liabilities. And fund balance is a term that's used to describe the net position of a governmental fund. And general fund is categorized as a governmental fund. For the two thousand and twenty original budget, the use of fund balance was budgeted at one point eight million dollars. Currently, because of the changes that you all have elected to make, the use of fund balance is budgeted at two point eight million. Just because it is budgeted as a revenue source does not mean it will actually be used. Dawson County is unfortunate. We have not had to use fund balance, even though it was budgeted, in the last four years. If actual revenues exceed expenditures, that will typically create an addition to your fund balance. This year, use of fund balance currently makes up only nine percent of your revenue for general fund. And, um, current estimation, this is an estimation, of unassigned fund balance to expenditures, is approximately eighteen percent. This assumes that we use all of that two point eight million that's in the budget. If we don't use it, we'll be at like twenty-six percent, twenty-seven percent.
Vicki, what, I think you said this number, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't have it. What did we put back roughly, two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen? Was it around?
I've got a, I've got another chart on, I'll show you. I'll move it back, give you some, yeah.
Thanks. I knew we added some back, both years.
Okay, um, the county fund balance policy. Okay, Dawson County has adopted a policy of maintaining an unassigned fund balance of between fifteen and twenty-five percent of its expenditures. This reserve helps the county survive during the time of the year before property taxes are received without needing to borrow short-term funds to pay expenses and payroll costs. And that will be done through a TAN, the Tax Anticipation Note. And that, if you borrow it in February or March, it has to be paid by the end of the year anyway, so just for the information. Having a strong fund balance helps maintain a positive cash flow. It provides a cushion during the downturn in the economy, like what we're potentially seeing right now a little bit. A healthy fund balance allows the Board of Commissioners to make adjustments to the budget during the year. And a healthy fund balance is one measure of the county's excellent financial status. And if debt was issued, like through GEO bonds, GEO bonds, it would help provide an excellent bond rating. That's one of the main things they look at, rating agencies. Here's the history I was telling you about. All right, um, if you look at this, it shows at the end of each year, from two thousand and twelve to two thousand and eighteen, it shows the change in total fund balance, the net change, the, the amount of unassigned, and then the amount of that, um, that was assigned, that was assigned to the next year's budget. So, um, for instance, in two thousand and eighteen, the end of two thousand and eighteen, we had a total fund balance of nine million, six hundred and twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars. That was a change of one point three million. We had eight point two million in unassigned, and then there were six hundred and fifty-five thousand assigned to the next year's budget.
Which can be capital, it's not ongoing, ongoing expenses that we typically sign.
Right.
And use that as.
It's usually for.
One-time purchases.
It's not for.
For operation.
Yeah. Um, the fiscal year nineteen audit is still in process, so I'm still kind of working with the, to see where we ended up for nineteen. But preliminary numbers show that the general fund's net position, fund balance, will increase by approximately seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Since two thousand and twelve, total fund balance for general fund has increased over four point five million dollars.
That's what we've been able to add, right?
And even though it's been budgeted, we haven't used fund balance.
Right, we have not used fund balance. That's right. It's been budgeted, but we have not had to use it because our revenues exceeded our expenditures. And how we've accomplished that is through conservative budgeting, and where people have not spent everything that's in their budget, so.
So when. Good department head.
Yes.
Chris said, in four years, we have not used any fund balance.
No, we have not. We have not.
So our department heads have done an excellent job.
Yes.
Managing their budget, staying well below what they were budgeted, to get to that four and a half million dollars over the last four years.
Yes.
I think we've got a good group watching them. Purchasing and financing. But now they're doing a good job.
Okay, on this next slide, we'll look at other funds, that, um, larger funds. We have more funds than these, but they're small and stuff, you know. I don't say they don't matter. They do matter. It's just these are the, the main ones we probably will look at. We have nine-one-one, their budget's a little over a million dollars. Their year-to-date revenues are at two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, and their expenditures are at three hundred and thirty-four thousand. Family Connection, their budget is three hundred and thirty thousand. Their revenues are at sixty-one thousand, and then spent eighty-four thousand. Grants Fund, our Grants Fund grows every year because we keep getting more and more grants. The budget currently is at three point three million. We've spent nine hundred and, I'm sorry, we received nine hundred and ten thousand dollars, and we've spent one point one billion. Hotel Motel, budget is at four, four hundred and fifty thousand. Revenues are at eighty thousand, and we have spent forty-eight thousand. Splas Six, current budget is at a little over ten million dollars. We have received two point one million in revenues, and that number includes, um, interest. That's not just the revenues from the sales tax, it includes interest. And we've spent eight hundred and forty-five thousand.
And in Splas Six, too, we also have, uh, we budgeted ten million dollars in two thousand and twenty. And in Splosh Six too, we also have, we boosted 10 million dollars in 2020. We have a carryover effect also associated with that, so we probably have more money than that actually emitted.
Capital Projects, current budget is at 1.5 million and we've got revenues of 772,000 and expenses of 249,000. Solid Waste Fund, budget is at 971,000 and revenues of 186,000 and expenses of 170,000. Impact Fees, the budget is 862,000 and we've received 750,000 in revenues and we've spent 7,000. And those were at the library. Pauline Ivy Senior Center, the budget this year is 731,000 and that's funds to be used to build a new senior center. The revenue from 1.4, that's just interest because we got the money a couple of years ago. This is just interest. And then we've spent 51,000. However, that money is in comber to be spent at the beginning of the year. Okay, next we'll look at the Splosh revenue. And I kind of did it the same way as I did for the loss. Showed each month what we received, January, February, March, four January, February, March. Year-to-date total last year was 1,939,433. This year, our total for the first three months is 1,884,620, a decrease of 2.83 or a net change of 54,812. The city of Dawsonville receives 15% of each month's receipt. So we needed to keep all this. They, they get 15% of this. And kind of like the loss, the, the March receipt was down 10%. Okay, Splosh year-to-date expenditures, broken down by category or department. We have information technology, budget of 71,000, spent 1,700. The sheriff has 785,000 in there for vehicles and we spent 7,000. Fire has 1.3 million and that's for the fire station. And we spent 7,100. Roads, 6.4, excuse me, million and we've spent 345,000. Parks has 294,000 and they've spent 140. We have a small contingency of 8,900. We've got payments budgeted of 1.1 million to the city. And total, as I said earlier, was a little over $10 million, but we have 1.8 billion in comber. These numbers show it's just been paid for, but we still have 1.8 billion in comber for projects in process. In conclusion, I would like to say that I feel like that Dawson County is in excellent financial condition. I think a lot of other governments would like to be who we are right now. Not much to add. A good fund balance. We're, we're very, very fortunate. Conservative budgeting and careful spending for several years has put Dawson County in a good position to weather the coronavirus storm. The finance department and county leadership monitor the situation constantly. And if preventative or corrective actions need to be taken, that will be advised. I think the next couple of months will determine any future actions. I think once we see what happens in the next six days, then, then, you know, we may come to you all and say, okay, we need to take action. But we won't know that until we actually see what happens. I don't think it's a time right now to panic. I think we need to continue the course that we're on when the pandemic first started. We sent out an email to all the departments and said, you know, essential spending, you know, maintaining, you know, what you have to have and don't delay buying any big ticket items or anything like that. And I think they've really done a great job. And I would like to thank the departments for doing such a good job during this pandemic because they have really been great. They've done everything we've asked them to do. They got their information, payroll, AP, everything to us on time. They did a great job. Excuse me, I talk too much. And I'd also like to thank my staff. I think they have done a really good job and kept everything going. And I would like to publicly thank them for, for doing the great job that they did. Everyone got paid. The bills were paid. The grants were submitted. Purchasing was done. So it was good. So thank you to them. Do y'all have any questions?
Questions for Ms. Vicki.
Thank you, Vicki.
Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. I mean, that's, uh, Stephen North.
Thank you very much.
A water.
Thank you, Vicki.
Thank you. And we'll put this on the website. So we'll, we'll, yeah, let me know if you have any questions. Thank you.
I want to publicly thank all of our staff as well. Thank Vicki and her staff and David and his leadership. They took the proactive approach in finances of this county when COVID-19 first started. Set that out early. Everybody bought into that. Staff has done an excellent job of managing their budgets, as you can see. They've done that for years, not just this year, but they have managed budgets well over the past several years, coming in under budget so that we can add to the fund balance to where in these times and these situations that we find ourselves in today, we have the finances to keep rolling forward without having to panic. So that's a good thing. Thank you, Dave, for your leadership. Thank you, Vicki, for your leadership in finance. Department heads, thank you for all your leadership as well and doing a fantastic job for the citizens of Dawson County. Now, let's move on to the county manager before they.
Just to add to that, do one thing to all the staff as well. And, and just in a small sense, just so you know, every piece of cart and purchase that is made, staff has been instructed that, that needs to run through the county manager for approval and CFA. So we're watching these dollars and these dimes and these pennies very carefully. One of the key indicator reports that are in your packets, agreements and contracts of the month are there as well. I think Richard Gaines mentioned something about loss was about 10.1%, I think it was. And Splosh about 10.4 for this time last year. So that gives you an indication there. County offices will be closed on Monday, May 25th for Memorial Day holiday. The COVID-19 testing site at Rock Creek Park will be closed Saturday through Monday in observation Memorial Day. It will reopen on Tuesday, May 26th. At this point, more than 15,000 people have been tested at the site. The site is set to close Friday, May 29th. That's a permanent closure, I believe, correct, chief?
But it's kind of up in the air right now?
Kind of flowing a little bit, but right now.
Still working with the guard.
Still what?
Guard and Augusta medical to the permit. They could extend, but that's dependent on the national guard orders.
The moratorium that the board approved 60 days ago was up Tuesday of this week. So planning is already seeing an uptick in call line and Jameson's here maybe to talk to that if you have any questions regarding that. The pool at Bennett Memorial Park will open Monday, June 8th for the season. Patrons and employees alike will have to adhere to some new rules and safety guidelines. Additional information can be found on the county's website or by calling Parks and Grass Department. Lord is posting that on the web. There will be a sign posted at the gate, questions that are asked, things that need to be done with keeping the social distancing, you know, that type of thing. So we are going to be compliant with what the regulations are for opening that pool. That has also been approved through the health department, Bill Ringel. So we should be set to go. It's going to open a little late on June 8th. So that will be on June 8th. Because of COVID-19, the Burn Foundation has requested that the boot drive scheduled for June the 21st through the 23rd be canceled due to the handling of money and being unable to maintain appropriate, appropriate social distancing. So that, that would be.
Can we mitigate that with like an online type of thing?
That's a good question. I'll let that chief answer that one.
Can you do it online? Virtual boot drive instead of physical boot drive due to the time?
Uh, you know, I'm sure that we could. We've done a lot of virtual in the last 90 days. So I'm sure we could probably do something of that nature, but, you know, I'd have to look at that. We've probably been the very first ones to do a virtual boot drive. But just really, we took the guidance straight from the Georgia property Burn Foundation. And really, a lot of it had to do with the handling of the current.
True. Yeah, let's try to do it. Let's, let's be the first at something and do the version. I like that. Even though they come to.
Pull it off. We'll make it happen.
You look great tonight.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, sorry you stick your tongue in it.
Yeah.
Last item that I have on here, Commissioner, is that this week is an important week. This is National EMS Week as well as National Public Works Week. I'd like to take a minute to thank all the staff in both of these departments for their dedication, hard work in ensuring that Dawson County remains safe for all our citizens. They've done an outstanding job during, through this process and continue to work daily on that. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for the county manager?
Um, I was looking through, I guess, it's probably the COVID-19 has caused, I know they released a lot of inmates statewide, but I noticed that inmates have gone down over about 50% housing. Is that, is that affecting our, I guess, transfer station, the grass cutting or it's, I know we've had to, and I know you've had to put your people at that. Is that what's affecting it? Could we get that answered?
I, I, I can't tell you. I have requested a meeting with Major Rowan to discuss that with Public Works and facilities. I can't say for sure that's why the inmate population is down. But we are seeing some reductions in inmate labor at the transfer station and at
Grass.
Go grass cutting and those type of things. So I have requested a meeting with them and mature here shortly. I'll hear back.
I just saw that number. It was dropping like.
That's correct.
I can answer that question after the jail. Basically, the judge has got together and they got everybody out of jail that was a nonviolent
Okay.
crime to reduce the population.
Okay. Let's, we'll continue to work with them on, you know, what happened.
I just want to recognize Dr. Anderson and Chief back there for the, they worked hard on this side and his, Dr. Anderson's staff as far as testing side. And I just want to appreciate it. They had to take a lot to get it here. And I know it's, people's gotten, actually from our state, had to get tested here. So that's a, that's a big job and thank y'all for doing that.
Just in closing also, even recognizing the Public Works and EMS, as I said a moment ago, you know, sometimes you don't recognize internally what's going on, but all the staff, senior staff and staff alike have made a lot of adjustments to keep things rolling and going good and strong. So want to thank them as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
All right, we will take about a few minute break. Then we'll be back for our voting session. Give the staff enough time to get set up for that and we'll be back. Thank you for your attendance and thanks to anyone who's watching at home.